Podcast you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I want to call our meeting back to order. This is our open session. We have no report out of closed session. We're going to do the pledge and I have the flag in my background. So everyone, please stand wherever you are. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So already said we have no report out of closed session. We're going to be adopting our agenda. And we just had one change to our agenda and that was in consent, we will pull G. Any other changes to the agenda?
But we're just pulling G to vote on it separately, correct?
Correct. Sorry, I'm not moving. Yeah, sorry. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move.
I'll second. I got you. Thank you, member Vickers. I'll second. Can we have a roll call vote to adopt the agenda, please? Oh, wait, do I call? Do I call on my student board reps on these now?
Yes.
Okay, student board reps, who will be voting this evening?
Why don't you introduce them?
Oh, okay. Do you want to introduce them now, Dr. Valoria? Do you want to wait till we do reports?
We're going to do it in reports.
Okay, so we'll introduce them, but who will be doing the voting tonight?
I believe I will.
Okay, Soren, thanks. Okay, so Soren, I'm going to have you vote on adopting, move to adopt the agenda. So here is where you say yes or no to vote to adopt it. I'm going to help you. Okay, he's gonna, he's gonna give a yes. We'll get a rhythm, I promise, you and me. Okay, and then go ahead, Victoria, roll call.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries five zero to adopt the agenda. So whoever has a phone ringing in their house, you need to mute your, yeah, thanks. I don't know who it is, but we get a little echo and then we hear you. Okay, shame on you. Mute. Okay. We have no recognitions. We now have public comment on non-agenda items. And we have participants and they are to raise their hand in the, is it the attendees room? I'm not sure what the title is. And Mr. Conlon will bring you in for your live public comment. You get three minutes to comment. Mr. Conlon.
At this time, no one has raised their hand.
Okay. Okay, so this is our only time to open the public comment for non-agenda items and we have no hands raised. I just want to confirm that. And now we'll go to our reports, but I'll start with Dr. Valoria introducing our student board reps.
Well, I'd like to introduce our, and I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what themselves and, but we have Soren and Johanna as our two student board reps this year, so welcome. And I'll let you guys do a little quick, brief intro and we'll go from there.
Thank you so much. Just a quick question before we get into this. Should I give my, our report as well in this time?
Yeah, you could do a little introduction of yourself and then give your portion of the report and then Johanna can do, she has a portion as well. She can introduce herself and do the portion. Sound good? Okay.
So I'm Soren Tippel. I'm a senior at the high school here. And I'm very, very honored and very grateful to have, to be a part of this, of the board and to be able to increase student voice and opinion here. And I'm very excited to see where this goes and get this experience of working with such an esteemed group of people and, and to really help up student voice. And so Johanna will be giving kind of the updates from the schools. And I'll be kind of giving a brief interview, overview of kind of what we hope to achieve this year. And basically what we hope to achieve this year is just in further increase student voice and student opinion. And it gives, really shows students that they matter at all levels. So whether it's high school, whether it's elementary school, we want to increase student voice and opinion and make sure all students feel that they matter and their opinions matter and are heard. And some ways we have to do this are through, right now, social media is the main way to do that. And we also hope to form partnerships with the lower schools, leadership groups, as well as groups like PALS, which work to kind of make students feel welcomed. And so we hope this year that we can increase student voice and make sure everyone feels welcomed and heard, as well, as well as increase the younger students' voice and role in the school district.
That's great. Thank you, Soren. Johanna, you're next.
Yeah, so I'm Johanna LeGault. I'm a senior at LBHS and I'm so grateful for this opportunity to be able to represent the schools and students of our district. So I'll be talking about, we met with each principal of all the schools in the past couple of weeks. And so some of them have been going back and I'll just report on what's been happening. So Elmore, Principal Duddy reported back, they returned to school this week. And he said that some students felt kind of nervous coming back, but once they got to see all their friends again, they felt more comfortable. And he was so grateful for the collective partnership with the district and the Elmore staff for making it very safe. They've been taking temperatures and safely guiding the students to their designated locations, making sure there's not a lot of contact. Top of the world. They, on Monday, I believe, the K through second grade went back to school. And then on Wednesday, the grades three through five went back to school, so they split it up. She said that the spirits were super high, the kids were super excited to be back and see everybody and the staff was really happy to have kids back on the campus again. Thurston, Principal Vidal is coming back next Monday as the principal. And Jeannie Iman, she left last Friday. And they said that their SDC program is back on campus and the students who have chosen to come are very excited to be there and their clubs are starting soon all virtual. And the teachers and students are very excited to have this opportunity to connect through extracurriculars. And then at the high school, we're still virtual, obviously, and personally, I feel like it's been going very well. I think the best it could be for an online situation. And from talking to my friends and just kind of cut conversation, they also agree that the way it's scheduled out in the trimester system and it, it works the best it can for having to do online school. So the trimester system is really great on relieving stress and it's been going really well. So that's the update on all schools.
Thank you, Johanna. We welcome you guys and we welcome, I will get a rhythm for the vote, but Soren, I'll be going to you for the votes tonight. So now we have our bargaining unit representatives, Margaret Water with CSEA.
Yes, good evening. Well, as mentioned, we have two schools open and we're moving along. And, you know, four days into this, there's a lot of things happening. So I'd like to mention that classified employees are filling the gaps between the transitions between cohort A and B. And with all of that being said, with the support of the teachers, the students are actually having lessons and we're doing assessments and all of the things that we normally expect during the school year. I'd also like to thank the Thurston staff, classified staff, that has come to support. Top of the world, helping with the car in the morning, helping with, again, transitions of students. All of that support shows the team effort of one power of LBUSD, which I believe was Dr. Valoria's comment a long time ago. And I use a lot of my Twitter comments. And we also actually had an Elmore classified employee at our site because it was needed. And I understand that going forward, the high school will be supporting Elmore with some of their needs as a classified employees. We'd like to acknowledge, first of all, that the individual site representatives at all schools, but especially the elementary and the administration are there, seeing what's happening on a moment-to-moment basis. And as we move forward, as was mentioned by our student rep, that students really are in good spirit, they're happy to be back. And they're, they're moving around transitioning and yes, you know, it's times when, you know, did we get to the right spot at exactly the right time, but it'll all start to flow together. So we're happy to be back. The staff is moving forward and completely doing what needs to be. And I don't want to discount that the teachers, they're in their groups and we don't see them as much, but we're transitioning with the other cohorts. So I really want to say that it's really, and of course, all the clerical staff is doing everything beyond. So everybody, maintenance and operations, everyone is a total team spirit.
Thank you, Margaret. That's wonderful. Great report. And for LaBufo, we have Sarah Hopper with her report. You're on mute, Sarah.
Pretty much, I'm going to mirror everything that Johanna has said and Margaret has said and that we're open and our K through 12, SDC classes are open with all the safety protocols in place. And even with this new normal of school, teachers and students are excited to be back at school. It still did have that buzz of that first day. And admin has been visible and supportive on sites, pitching in when and wherever needed. It has been all hands on deck and we recognize and are grateful for the classified staff and the role they played in supporting us during this opening. And throughout this dynamic year, we will all be involved in, along with Dr. Valoria, Mike Conlon, Dr. Winston, Dr. Keller, Dr. Mayberry, and Irene White have provided throughout these dynamic and ever-changing times. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. And now we go to board members' reports and we'll start with Dr. Kelly.
I want to thank everyone who has got our schools opened. It's been very impressive to watch. I'm just so delighted that I have a new puppy and so I walk him in the morning and I got to see the kids getting ready for school. And they had their mask on and the parents were trying to explain to them that I was on the school board. They didn't seem to care one bit who I was, but it was just so much fun seeing these kids getting into the car and going off to school. I drove by Elmore today and it was just so nice to see the parking lot full and the excitement going on up there. So I'm just grateful for all of the parents who have written to me, who have stopped me and talked with me. And also the parents who have spent the time in the secondary school with helping with the education of the kids doing Zoom. Zoom is a, online training is, is trying particularly for young students. And it takes, you know, a whole community as far as for it to work. And I'm just grateful to the parents who have in between the, the various courses, have made sure that their children weren't watching videos and were working on their school projects. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Board member Perry.
Hi, I'm also thrilled that our two elementary schools are back and it's exciting to see buses around once again. Welcome to both Johanna and to, and to Soren. And I'm thrilled that you're working on student, student voice and that you're including younger kids too. I think that's fantastic. This month is actually Career Construction Month and they're expecting to have, be missing more than a million jobs within the next couple of years in construction. So CCA is trying to be proactive and get, get people ready for that before the huge shortage. Thanks.
Thank you, board member Perry. Board member Norman, wait, Vickers, sorry. I have my little checklist. Board member Vickers.
Okay, got it. We did have a good CCA meeting and they are, they're virtual, except for a few classes where they need to come, mostly making it from last spring where they had internships and they need to do hands-on things in there. They have all their protocols in place. That's a very limited and it's adults. Those are adults that were in those courses. I did attend the virtual high school PTA meeting and we had good information from me, good reports from Anne Bergen and Angela Ship to detail what they're doing online for students with scholarship information, with college application help, with virtual college, the visitations when they come, they're doing all that virtually. And they have appointment times set up and they're planning to expand that as necessary. But I didn't know that they were doing that and it was great to hear. So they're trying not to have it be, that be taken away from students while they're doing distance learning. The PTA council meeting, it was a power outage at my house, so I could not connect. I know they had a number of participants that couldn't connect and I don't, I don't know whether they actually had part of the meeting or not, but it was that day, that Friday or Thursday with the power outage just all over town. So I can't report on that. Thank you.
Thank you, board member Vickers. We have had some powder, power outages as of late. Board member Norman, then your report, please.
Community coalition beats between our two board meetings, so I'll have something on the 22nd.
Anything else from you or is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? That is not it, actually.
Okay.
Because I like to do my quirky act of kindness and I'm, we're not all in person, I'm just going to pull one from my bag and I'm going to read one to everyone. "By swallowing evil words unsaid, no one has ever harmed his stomach," by Winston Churchill. There we go. That's, now I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I'm the final report. Welcome, Johanna and Soren. You've gotten a thumbs up from my daughter. I told them I was on a meeting with you both tonight, so welcome. We're really happy to have you. And I really appreciate you reaching out to leadership in the elementary, which I think is really important. I want to thank everyone who has helped open our elementary schools this week, every layer of our work, the administration, to custodians, to our CSEA, to LaBufo. They're doing many jobs that aren't naturally part of their job title, which is measuring quarantining, health care issues. So we're kind of configuring ourselves and creating these new roles for ourselves and reopening our schools. So I, the goal is to keep everyone safe. I also wanted to say that I've heard from several families that are concerned about our mask policy for the younger kids. And I'm curious what other districts are doing in the county, whether in order to kind of escalate our safety levels, we need to expand our mask wearing to all our students, if it's possible. That's the end of my report. And then the superintendent, Dr. Valoria, your report, please.
Well, not to be redundant, but yes, we started our TK V and SDC. K-12, obviously, this week was, it's been busy. I can say, I think I walked a little, almost seven miles on, on Monday, across the campus, back and forth, trying to just be there to help out. My staff have been just amazing as we've kind of worked through these challenging days that, every day is something new that we're trying to, to evolve and get better. And, you know, I think for, for us, having our nurses, our nurses, specifically our two at the school sites, has just been a help that I don't think any of us could have imagined. They have been very, very busy, unfortunately. Right now, we have about 20 students that are currently under quarantine. And, you know, unfortunately for us, it is something I expect that we'll be continuing to, to work through. But they have been great working with the healthcare agency, calling parents and doing our end of the contact tracing with the healthcare agency. And obviously, if it's a community spread, the healthcare agency handles that. But when it's a school site situation, we're working and helping them contact trace. And so again, many thanks to both of our nurses, Kelly and Pam have been fantastic. We have had a few questions. I know I've received a few as well, as Ms. Wolf pointed out. And my recommendation in, in talking with the principals as well, that we will move it forward and require masks for all students TK through 12th grade. And that students that have a medical need to not wear a mask will give parents some time to get that. But in consulting with all of our surrounding districts regarding their mask policies as well, wondering where they were at, confirmed that they are all requiring masks as well for their students TK through 12. So that'll be something that we'll work with our sites to kind of roll forward. That's just one of the changes, obviously. I think the playbook will continue to kind of evolve as we get guidance and make some edits to it. For example, our playbook currently has the playgrounds closed, but we just received guidance around playgrounds and what we can do to reopen them. So we're adhering to those, that new guidance related to playgrounds and making sure that we can reopen them safely and follow the guidance. So again, ever-evolving. I can't thank staff enough for all their hard work, the board as well, for all of your support. I look forward to getting an opportunity to tour you guys around. I think we have those scheduled in the, in the next week or two. And we'll get some mileage on your, on your shoes as well, getting around campus and seeing all the great things going on. So I look forward to that.
Thank you, Dr. Valoria. Dr. Winston, your report, please.
Thank you. I'll be redundant, but I'll be brief. I just wanted to really thank the principals, teachers, staff members, students and parents for such a smooth opening for in-person instruction at our elementary sites. We could not have had the successful transition without every single person on our campuses. And their flexibility, like Margaret described, is so appreciated. So just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winston. And Mr. Dixon, do you have a report?
I do. Thank you, President Wolf. I won't repeat everything Dr. Winston and Dr. Valoria said, although the feeling is the same. It's been an exciting week in a very good way. But one thing that, in particular, that member Perry just brought up was the excitement around seeing our buses throughout town again. And that, and it, it's a great sight because it means schools are back, we're reopening, we're in person. But one thing that I think, and I would like to give the board an update on, is the impact this pandemic has had on our transportation services. So we operate 12 buses out of our bus barn in the canyon. Typically, those buses would provide a capacity of a little over 1,000 kids. However, based on the guidelines that we're adhering to, for the safety of our students, our families and our community, that capacity has now gone from over 1,000 to roughly 160 total students able to ride our buses at any given time, so 16%. So we went from about 80, being able to fit 84 students on a bus to 14. So it's been significant. Not knowing the level of ridership when this all happened, in early summer, we did issue out a survey of, of interest to try and gauge the ridership, because again, we didn't know, given the pandemic, what the parents' response or willingness to put their child on a bus, regardless of the safety protocols and procedures we had in place. So in late August, with that survey of interest we issued out, we received 338 responses. That would help us plan, you know, are we able to meet the needs of our community and get all the students on the bus? Based on that survey, no, we're so well under capacity to handle that. So at the time, we did reach out to Durham and see if we can procure additional buses, which unfortunately was not the case. We, we had the capacity that we were, began with. Then again, in September, once we got a better idea of the reopening plan, or not reopening, I'm sorry, the return to school plan, where we use our transportation services, general transportation, we wanted to create a list of prospective bus pass issuances. So at the end of September, same format that we did with the interest survey, the apparent square sent it out to all of our families, received 218 responses. We have since worked through, just began distributing passes, we're almost done distributing passes. But the situation, like anything else, is still very fluid because some of those families that had initially wanted a pass have since canceled. So we're freeing up some spaces on our buses, which has been ongoing, almost a daily occurrence. And we're working with everyone on the list and interested families that have contacted our transportation services department to try and get as many families on our buses that we can in a safe manner within the guidelines that were allowed. We'll continue to, to work with whatever we can do to get as many of our families on the bus. We know the, the bus service is a great thing for our community. It takes a lot of vehicles off the road. They're CNG buses, so they're environmentally friendly, they're safe, with probably the seat protocols, seat belts, cameras. And regardless, we're still paying close attention. As has been mentioned, this is ever-evolving. So as with the guidelines, with the play structures have changed, maybe the guidelines might change for our bus, which could increase capacity, in which case, we're ready to adapt quickly, working with Durham and be able to expand whatever capacity we can at that time. However, I just wanted to give the board an update on where we are this week. It's, it's been interesting, just like we modified our sites, we've had to modify the operations of our school buses. And hopefully, we just continue to get better and better. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. I appreciate that. And it's important to know that you're, we are adhering to all the rules right now for busing and that's important. So thank you.
So I have a question about the busing. So is it legal for us to not provide busing to students that want it or need it?
It is a service we're providing. We do not have to provide the service, but that's just general home-to-school transportation. That doesn't pertain to special education or other service provider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on our agenda, we're going to number eight on the agenda and it's a public hearing. And per Education Code, section 60119 and 60422B, to ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for 2020, 2021, and certification of provision of standards aligned instructional materials. Dr. Winston, you'll present this?
This is the public hearing portion. So the resolution is down below, which you would vote on attesting to that. So this is the opportunity for a public hearing. Okay, so during this time, it is an open public hearing for comments. If anyone in the audience, I guess I'll call it, raises their hand, they can speak to the textbook and instructional material supplies of 2020, 2021. Mr. Conlon, has anyone raised their hand?
At this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have comments or questions on this item? Because this is just a public hearing.
I do.
Go ahead.
So, and, and I asked Dr. Valoria this before too. So as far as the performing arts and the visual arts, Dr. Valoria said there aren't necessarily books for the high school for that. What are, what are we doing for the elementary? I know that they're, put a lot of things online, the state did, for visual arts, for performing arts, besides music. And so I wondered how we are meeting our California state standards for the arts for elementary? And if we need materials, do we have everything we need?
We have the materials we need. And in fact, just today, when I was on TOW's campus, I saw Mr. Hartford providing instruction. Obviously, according to CDPH guidance, we can't, you know, have students playing wind instruments or singing, but he was showing them, he was demonstrating on a, on a musical instrument, how to, you know, techniques. And he, they had their books that they were using to follow along for the, for the music. Our teachers have the art materials and, and we have, you know, we were in transition this year with our K-5 art TOSA. And so we have her up and running. We're working on establishing our elementary art coordinators and they will work directly with teachers and staff on implementing those standards into their instruction. But of course, you know, our priority was getting school reopened. And we will continually be adding content in terms of, of visual and performing arts standards.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so now I will close the public hearing on this item and that is eight on our agenda. We're now going to number nine and that is our consent calendar. I've already pulled G. Does any member wish to pull any other item?
Just talk about one.
Okay. Um. Sorry, I'm reading my chart. Should I do public comment on consent before now? Okay, thank you, sorry. So again, people in the audience, if you have a public comment on our consent, which is B through P, and we're going to vote separately on G, you can raise your hand and you'll be brought in for public comment. Mr. Conlon, do we have anybody for public comment?
At this time, no, we do not.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close the public comment portion. Um, okay, so we have B through P and we're going to vote on G separately. Any board questions?
I have questions about H.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm all right to ask him.
Yeah, sorry.
I just wanted Dr. Valoria to explain to everybody again why we hired more teachers and teachers have extra periods, because people think some students left, some students came in. But we do have quite a few. I don't know how many it is. But we do have quite a few, I don't know how many it is, maybe 200 in virtual academy. So I keep getting, with less students, why are we hiring so many teachers? And you explain that well. So can you explain that to everybody? Thanks.
Sure. So, you know, as we have so many programs, you have to have the staff to, to meet the needs of our students. So it would be great if our students came in perfect bunches and we had 20 here and 20 here and, you know. But unfortunately, that's not, not the way it happens, and that's how it happens all the time in our, in staffing formulas. So we have obviously several programs with virtual academy running at the high school, virtual academy at the elementary school. And so we are staffing that accordingly. The, the same time, we realize that we don't want to create large impacts on our students. So we're trying to refrain from closing a class and moving teachers around, which would then cause our students to be moved around. You know, we've had a lot of movement in and out of virtual academy into hybrid at the elementary level with the opening of school. We're working through those challenges. But we're reticent to close a class with a student who's been in with their kinder teacher for several weeks, obviously, at this point now. Knowing that there is the potential that those students may flow back in to hybrid. You know, we're trying to meet the needs of, of everybody at this point. And though we had a deadline for, for folks to select their program, if a family is requested to go into virtual academy, we are allowing them to do that. And if we have space in the hybrid, we've allowed them to move backward. But we're hopeful that we can kind of settle in and then staff accordingly, so we can move forward. But right now, I think, you know, we are able to meet all the needs of our students. And I think the staff that we have brought on are been able to support the work that we're trying to do inside and outside of our classroom. So I hope that was what you were looking for, member Perry.
It was. Great, thanks.
Do any other board members have questions regarding consent?
But yeah, just to ask, and just to that, the cohorts are smaller than the traditional classes at the elementary, isn't that correct?
Yes, so, you know, the, the numbers are less, you know, in terms of, you're seeing some of our cohorts with about 10 students, in some cases are lower. So yeah, the, the cohorts are smaller. But again, as we've had movement in and out of the, the programming, we have some classes that have gotten a lot smaller. But at the same time, as I said, we're reluctant to want to collapse that class and, you know, determine where we put that teacher and then move kids around. Really just, but the kids have had a lot of change already, I think we all recognize that. And to say, okay, all of a sudden, you're, you're like five weeks in and you're going to get a brand-new kinder teacher because we're going to have to move some people around, we're just, we're trying to avoid that and trying to avoid combos as much as possible as well. Though we do have some in the VA program, we're, we're looking to address those as well, knowing that we have received a lot of requests to move into VA. So that, that's also impacted our ability to get enough materials on a regular basis. We had our numbers, we've had some kids move in, some kids move out. So we're, we have a lot of materials on order as well, just to make sure that we have enough to go around for everybody. And again, appreciate the flexibility of our teaching staff because they have been working in the VA program and in the hybrid program, have been adjusting quite a bit to, you know, students moving in and out. So very grateful for their flexibility.
Thank you. Any other questions on consent? Okay, I will need a motion to approve B through F and H through P.
So moved.
Second. On the second, Victoria, you got that, it's B through F and H through P. Dr. Kelly and then Board Member Vickers, roll call vote to approve those, please. Oh, sorry, student board rep?
Yes.
Okay, he said yes.
Thank you.
Now roll call vote.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion carries on this consent items 5O. And then we have item G, which is, yes.
Peggy, before you go on to item G, but it ties into item G, I just wanted to note that we just approved the minutes for five meetings that we held in September. And now we have a meeting that we held in, the last one in August. And so we are having, we are meeting a lot and, and attempting to deal with this whole situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so for the minutes for G, approval of August 31st, that was a special meeting. And Board Member Perry did not attend, and so I'll need a motion to approve those, please.
They'll move?
Second. Second, okay. And then roll call vote, Victoria, please. Oh, we're sorry, well, student board rep?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. So it carries for one? Yes?
Yes.
Maria, give me a thumbs up. Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now on to item 10, which is an information item, and it's our monthly financial update. And should we do public comments before Mr. Dixon? Okay, so anybody who's in the attending audience, if you'd like to make a live public comment, please raise your hand to be recognized, and Mr. Conlon will move you into our meeting. There any hands raised, Mr. Conlon?
At this time, there is not.
Okay, thank you. So we closed our public comment, and Mr. Dixon, can you give us our monthly financial update, please?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to break this into two parts, the first being the monthly financial report itself. There is one change, and it's a positive change, it's an additional page, the very first page you see. And just briefly, this is the monthly financial report ending August, the end of August. So there's only two months in this fiscal year period reported. So there's not going to be a lot to analyze in terms of just those two months, because school didn't return until the end of August. So we don't see a lot of expenditures until that time, nor, nor do we see a lot of revenues until, you know, December. However, this first page in the monthly financial report does offer the board and our public an opportunity to look at not just the first two months actual versus projected, but also looks out for the entire year, the projected revenues and expenditures and fund balance based on a historical trend, so it encapsulates past three years, looks at the trends based on what we received in revenues, the growth there, the expenditures and growth there or decline, and then what the potential impact on fund balance is. So when you look at the top, you see the total year-to-date revenues, it's trending positively at about $140,000. And when you look at the next bullet below then, our expenditures are also, at the end of August, trending in a positive rate in terms of having less expenditures than what'd be otherwise projected from the year prior. The bottom table itself looks at the projected difference, and I'm looking at the total row. The difference budgetarily-wise, again, this is just through August, is based on historical expenditures and revenues. We're looking at a positive change in our total budget of $1.3 million. That said, this is not a normal year. There are a lot of expenditures, though our revenues are expected to come in as projected because it's very steady, being a community-funded district. Our property tax revenues are coming in steady, the secured rule tax information has been put out. But expenditures are still an unknown. And as the school board knows, part of the COVID stimulus funds that were received from the federal and state government, amounted for our district of about $1.4 million. That money has all but been spent or accounted for via encumbrances. And if it hasn't been actually spent yet, it's still encumbered and it, it will show up as an actual spend as soon as those checks are cut. So it's, it's accounted for in the budget. But as you know, and when you tour our sites, you're going to see a lot of different purchases and equipment, and there's software, there's technology, there's disinfecting services, personal protective equipment. A lot of these things are ongoing costs that we're going to incur. And these, as of now, with no more stimulus funding assumed in the budget, these are going to be general fund dollars expended. And we already have spent general fund dollars to purchase and obtain services related to our COVID response. However, one part of this fiscal monthly report that I want to focus in on is we've been preparing for this. We've been preparing for this over at least the past five to seven years because as we are in the longest economic recovery period in history, we knew that a recession or something negative was bound to happen. Now, we couldn't guess it would be a pandemic. However, we're preparing our budget to be as flexible and adaptable as possible. And the one area I can point to in that regard, which doesn't show up in the monthly financial, does show up in every budget report in terms of adopted budget, first interim, second interim, as our components of ending fund balance when you look at potential one-time expenditures. Those potential one-time expenditures have to do with the board's goals, possible purchases of textbooks beyond what we had assumed or budgeted, possible facilities or service costs beyond, again, what we had budgeted. And really gives us a buffer to take our, beyond our budget, what are one-time costs that we may incur that we're not aware of? And one prime example of this is when we had the gas leak at Thurston Middle School in 2017. That was unexpected, and that was a large cost. And if we were to use a routine restricted maintenance budget, that would take the 25% of that budget, and it would no longer be able to do our routine maintenance, which again, down the line would have caused more costs. So for some context on the potential one-time dollars, to prepare us for this COVID response and why I think we've, and again, thank the school board and the leadership, the districts, districts has had a long time to put us in a financial strong position to, to handle this pandemic. When we look back at 2015, 16, and I'm going to look at second, if you look at the second interim report, because that's the closest to year-end close for those financial reports, there was no money budgeted for potential one-time expenditures, it was $0. In 2016, 17, there was $500,000 budgeted. 2017, 18, $620,000 budgeted. 2018, 19, $850,000 budgeted. And last year, 2019, 20, there was $3.2 million budgeted. Again, this was in preparation of keeping our budget flexible, not transferring any more into reserves this year, helped us even further, giving our adopted budget this year, this isn't second term, but adopted budget, the potential one-time money of $5.75 million to tap in to help offset or manage the COVID-19 response to have a safe return to schools. And that's where we built a lot of the flexibility, because really, when you talk about tapping in the reserves, and I've, I've heard the discussion about our reserves, the last thing I think we'd want to do is put money into reserves, only have to pull it back out again to deal with or respond to a potential expenditure that we know is, is unexpected, but we also can plan for it. And that's what we do with our one-time money in the general fund. So I'm happy to take any questions. We are tracking, as expected. Again, that first page gives a lot more detail by major object code. But I also wanted to use this opportunity to talk to the school board and reassure that we put ourselves in a very good position to respond to this, this crisis in terms of the pandemic and appreciate all the leadership and allowing us to get the support to help get us there as well.
Any questions from board members?
I have a question, not a question, I have a comment. Because I, I received a question that was based on information in a news article that Ms. Morgan had stated the amount of money that the district received from the property taxes. And the question that came to me was, could it possibly be that much? And so I asked the question, and it is not, it is not that amount. And so I wanted to clarify for anyone who's listening and for the record, that is just slightly less than 26% that the district receives from property taxes, although that does fund approximately 88% of our budget. But the information that went out was significantly more than that, so it needs to be clarified for public information. Thank you.
I have a comment. I would really like to thank Jan Vickers, because she has been on this board, she's been here longer than any of us. But she worked on making sure, way back when, making sure that our board policy holds us accountable to having the transparent reporting that we have every month on our budgets. And that, and that comes to the board. There's also an organization that gathers that has all the union representatives in it and board members and, and other people, the public as needed, that has, has allowed for a transparent discussion every month on our budget. So I really want to thank you, Jan, for that. And Jeff, I want to thank you for forecast five, because I know you get less questions from us now. It just makes it so much easier to understand. We really appreciate it. And for all of your staff, the work they put into it.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you. That is, it is so important, and that's why we're always thanking Jeff for so much information and for making it so public, because it is a super important aspect that the district be out there and everyone understand exactly where all the dollars are. Thank you.
Well, and, and Jan, I'm not, I just, from every meeting I've been at, and every discussion around budget, no matter what we're discussing, you always bring up fiscal solvency and budget. And at first, I didn't quite understand, right? I didn't understand what I was new. And then looking at all the board policies and how things are built in that are, are different than what the samples would be of a policy. And so I really appreciate that you dedicated so much time and effort over all these years to make sure that what we now just think is common practice, you know, that, that you worked so hard to put in place and that wasn't common practice. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Board Member Perry?
Yes. Also, thank you to Jan for keeping an eye on that, and huge thanks to Jeff for all he does and making this easy and all the graphs. I think that's really helpful. I know it may not be possible now, but in the future, I think it would be really helpful if we had, if we could have things together, like all the technology costs. Because when you go back and you know you approved some in April, you know, maybe there are a few more approved in July, it, it's, it's very cumbersome to try to put things in categories, so then we can actually figure out how much we're spending in areas. Just, just a request for some time.
Jeff, aren't those total amounts in the yearly budget? What we allocate?
They are, and it's, you can do it on function or object code. However, there's a lot of different reporting features. So I can certainly look into additional options. You know, we're always looking to update how we report our budgets and make it user-friendly and anything we can do to help to that end, we're always looking for. So any feedback and input is appreciated. But I've taken that note and, you know, we'll, we'll absolutely look for any way we can help the board and the public understand what we're presenting.
Just to clarify, when I asked for some of that, it came to me saying, check, check the budget for July. Check the budget for May. It was, it wasn't, and it, you know, it's not Jeff's fault. It just wasn't able to be all categorized together, which I think would be really helpful. And it's been like that in other areas, too.
Jeff, maybe you can, so we used to look, when we're looking at the budget, we have what we approve, right, for the year. And then as those contracts come up, which is whenever the contract was created, it's not, right, that's when it's created, then, and then we're approving that contract, and so then it renews, I think is what member Perry is talking about. So those renewals each year, that's all accounted in the budget. And basically, we just see those dollar amounts and those dollar amounts decrease with each time we renew those contracts. Is that, I'm trying to simplify it, is that the?
Yeah. And I think when we're, when we're looking at our budget and what we think is important to our students, it would be helpful to see an amount that we spent on technology, say. An amount that we spent on, you know, what we know, that salaries are the, the highest.
But that's in that code. The codes are where those are summarized in the categories of the budget. That's how I understand it to be. There's categories.
But it is, no, like if you're looking, if you're looking for how much we spent, say, on social emotional learning, there, there isn't a category for that. It's, you look here, you look there, or maybe I missed it. Is there a category for that?
If I can, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we're talking about two different things. Where I think, one hand, we have the budget, the forecast, financial tool. We do identify the major objects that identify the various categories. I think, member Perry, you're referring to expenditures related to those categories?
Right.
Which is not budget, that's actual expenditures, and that would have to do with the warrants.
Right.
So that, yeah, we don't sort the warrants that brought every board meeting for approval, but that's after they've already been expended based on the budgeted amount that's been approved and adopted by the board.
I guess maybe for me, some of the expenditures are in too big of a piece for me to really figure out what part is what.
Okay.
Well, we approve the budget category, so it's not Well, we approve the budget category, so it's not going to be beyond an amount. And so when the board approves a budget, you're saying, I'm fine with this category up to this amount. It's encumbered. And so to me, that in itself, you're saying, I'm going to, I'm okay, and those warrants fit into that category.
I'd like to change the topic a little and thank Jeff for the refining with the bond that saved the district a whole lot of money and the taxpayers an awful lot of money, and well done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Kelly. Okay, so that was just an information item. And just to remind attendees that once the public comment section is closed, you cannot raise your hand during board discussion and be entered into it, so it has to be during the public comment for those that are interested. We're now into item 11 on our agenda, and this is the first quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williams case settlement. And is there anybody that raised their hand for a public comment on this item? Mr. Conlin.
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So Dr. Winston, please let us know.
Thank you. This is our quarterly report on Williams complaints, and we have no Williams complaints this quarter up through September 30.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to item number 12, which is an information item as well. And this is a status report regarding 2020, 2021 inter-district transfer agreements. Is there any public comment? People can raise their hand if they would like to comment on this.
None at this time, as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conlin. Do we need any report on that, or there was a, I don't have a name, but anybody reporting on this?
It would be me. Sorry about that. This is our routine report of inter-district transfer agreements processed for this school year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but the graph and the, or the table is in the board item itself.
Do any board members have questions or comments on this item?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to number 14, and this is an action item. This is a word of contract for CBPH COVID industry guidance to Lopez Works, Inc. to daily disinfect facilities in an amount not to exceed $600,000. Is there any public comment on this item? Please raise your hand right now if you're an attendee and would like to comment. Mr. Conlin will let me know.
There's no one interested in public comment.
Okay, and this is a report by Mr. Dixon. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So this would be an award for third-party disinfecting services that we began with over summer. However, will the services, assuming we use them throughout the remainder of the school year, will exceed the bid limit while we're bringing it to the school board for approval tonight. These services include the primary use of UV light on all interior spaces. That UV light treatment is proven to kill 99-plus percent of bacteria and such things as COVID-19. All the backup on the research and white paper associated with that is towards the end of the contract from downloaded from the board. Another service that they provide in addition to the UV light treatment has to do with exterior spaces, and that's at the front of the agreement itself. That includes the steam power washing and chemical treatments, primarily for outdoor areas or heavy-use areas like a food service area or food handling area, which would be very minimal in our case, so primarily the power washing, steam cleaning on all of our exterior spaces. The $600,000 amount assumes a distant, daily disinfecting of all campuses and our district office five days a week for every day through this entire school year. Hopefully, that does not need to be the case. However, if that were to be the case, we wanted to exceed the amount, so that we don't have to come back in the future. But again, hopefully, we don't reach that amount. One question that we did, I did receive, and I thank you, member Perry, for asking it, is what is the impact of these disinfecting services with our custodial staff? There really is no impact. Our custodial staff is still fulfilling all of their job duties on a daily basis, and whereas they normally might have rote driven through on a week-to-week basis on disinfecting, because they can't possibly disinfect the entire campus every day like this third-party can. They are now spot disinfecting throughout the day on all the common use areas, because as we know, we can't wait till the end of the day to disinfect such things as restrooms or high-traffic or use areas on our campuses or offices. So the custodians have picked up and really stepped up for us, and they're doing that throughout the day to make sure our facilities are as clean and safe as possible. All the other operational procedures and workload is exactly the same. So with the board's approval, I should mention that we did solicit for three different proposals on this, and Lopez was the lowest responsive responsible bidder based on that one cent per square foot disinfecting service cost. And that's where, but as you can see, that does add up if you do every campus every day. It can add up to potentially $600,000, which is why we wanted to bring this to the board tonight. And without, I'm happy to answer any questions related to their service.
I just want to reiterate, this is for every campus?
And district.
Right, okay, and district office. Okay, so every facility. Any other board members have questions?
So we don't, we're not in session in the high school, so why are we disinfecting the high school on such a rate?
Any, thank you. Good question. Any space that's being occupied or walked through by any staff currently is being disinfected, because the chance that some other staffer may occupy or enter that space the next day, we want to make sure that that space has been disinfected and night before. If the space is not occupied or used during the day, it will not be disinfected. But that's confirmed with our maintenance staff and the site administrators to make sure that no one had actually entered the space prior to disinfecting.
Thank you.
Board member Perry, I think I saw you had a question. Go ahead.
I just don't have a visual of what this looks like. They said some of, some of the lights are on carts, so does that mean you take them around kind of like a vacuum, so they go everywhere? Because I know we have a lot of Plexiglas up. How do they, how do they reach all of the surfaces?
So this is where Mr. Zeta explained it to me really well. The type of light and system that they use, it does, it's not a direct light shot. It's not like a laser. Light actually wraps around and disinfects every surface in a three-dimensional area that it is exposed to it. So when you walk into a room and the light is on, whether that surface is facing in front or towards you, now obviously, if it's faced down on the desk, you're not going to get the underside of a booklet, say, but if it's all the five, the five total sides or the four other sides beyond the cover, would be disinfected by that light because of the way it reacts and ionizes. As far as the, the steam cleaner, that's a little more self-explanatory. What when it's cleaned is going to be steamed. But yeah, the light itself is actually goes through every hard and soft surface and neutralizes all the bacteria and viruses.
So it only has to be one place in the room?
Yeah, in some cases, they may move it around, depending on what the, what the room looks like. There might be some odd angles. Not all of them are square, unfortunately, or they might have shelving that might block some of the light.
And then I read that it's not safe for people to be there when they're doing that. How, how long after can people be in a room?
You can go in right away after. You just can't be there while they're doing it.
Okay, just not when the light's on?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other board member questions or a motion to approve the action item?
A move approval?
Second, okay, we got a second. Any other comments? I do want to comment that I have friends who teach in Capo, and they are requiring their teachers to disinfect. I just want to note that. So I'm really grateful that we are investing in a professional firm. We have our custodians. We have multiple layers of disinfecting, so I'm really grateful for you getting this service. I think it's really important. We don't need to put that stress on our teachers as other districts are doing, so I'm grateful. And that also increases their safety as well, but they're not doing it. Any other comments or questions?
Are we having discussion? I mean, now?
Yeah, discussion, yeah.
Jeff, are we having, still having shared spaces during the school day? And if so, does that get disinfected in between a group using that space?
If it is a shared space between the students, is that what you're referring to, Ms. Bickers?
So that, right.
Yeah, if the, if the students are gonna share, now, it's not happening, but if they were to share space, we'd have to disinfect, not the UV light, but we'd have to disinfect with our custodial staff.
Okay, so we're.
Cohorts, you know, by designing the course the way we've done it, having staff move, it keeps students in their one space during the day, and then obviously, they go outside, they have you know, the space where they're potentially eating, and then they go back into the space they were already inhabiting. So, for example, today, students in the first grade group, the B group, were in the library with, and having the staff come through and doing computers, doing enrichment, doing math, whatever it might be, and they stay there the duration of the day. So we don't move students around, because that was what we're trying to avoid. Obviously, it's having to disinfect spaces all throughout the day. The other part that Jeff didn't mention, but I think is important to note, too, is that this does free up our custodial staff to do regular runs across the campus, disinfecting door handles, doing all those different things that require like just all-day disinfecting versus having them worry about having to come back and do all the classrooms, etc. So all of our high-touch surfaces are getting ongoing daily disinfection within the school day itself. So I think it just gave us another layer for, for our students and staff to feel safe that we were getting across that campus and keeping it clean.
And so that would really be necessary with restroom use?
Correct, correct.
Any other discussion from board members? I don't see any. So student board member vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. And a roll call vote for board members, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, so motion carries 5-0. Thank you, everyone. We are now on item 16A, and this is approval of resolution number 20-13, ensure availability of textbooks and instructional materials for the 2020-2021 per education code section 60119. We had our public hearing on this earlier in the meeting, and this is now the action item to approve it. Do we have any public comment for this item? Please raise your hand. And Mr. Conlin will bring you into our meeting for a live comment.
No hands at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Our public comment is closed. Dr. Winston, did you have anything else to report on this item?
No, not unless there were other questions.
Okay, any questions from board members? I don't see any, so I may have a motion to approve.
They're moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, board member Perry. Any discussion on this item at all? This is per education code section 60119 on availability of textbooks. I don't see any, so we'll go ahead and do a vote. Student board rep vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And roll call vote for board members.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. We're now on 16B, and this is approval of grant agreement by and between Orange County Children and Families Commission and Laguna Beach Unified School District for the provision of services of the kindergarten readiness initiative for the term of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Please note, that is three years. We are going to open the live public comment. Please raise your hand if you would like to comment on this grant agreement.
There are no hands at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the public comment. Dr. Winston, a report on this item, please.
Thank you. So this is a renewal of our grant with the Orange County Children and Families Commission. This has been in place since October of 2000, and this new three-year agreement will allow the district to provide services or to continue to provide services to our families of children ages zero to five, parents of early learners and early learner providers. And while you probably are aware in the backup that the grant allocation is less than previous years, but this new grant allows for greater flexibility in expending funds. There were certain requirements in the grant previously that required a certain percentage of services to be assigned to a school readiness nurse, and they have eliminated that requirement. And so now we can use that more flexibly to, you know, adjust to the needs of our students and families. So you may see further recommendations from staff at future board meetings to reclassify or create alternative positions based on this new grant flexibility. So this is the first step in that process.
Thank you. Any board questions on this grant? Board member Bickers, did you have a question? Nope, okay, I just saw you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
They'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
A second from board member Kelly, thank you. Any discussion on the children and families? This is the group that also does the report on children of Orange County every year. That's really informative.
This has allowed us to provide a lot of services to preschool-age families in school readiness and school preparation and programs that they've put on, I mean, before this last six months at the library, at the local library. They've really reached out to get parent education information to parents of children that are not of school age. It's been very, very productive.
They're an impressive organization, for sure. I've done some work with them myself. Any other discussion? Okay, board member, a student board rep vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. And roll call vote for board members.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. We're now on 16C, and this is approval of independent contractor agreement with Intents Sports Performance LLC in the not-to-exceed amount of $42,000. If you'd like to make a live public comment, please raise your hand to be recognized to comment on Intents Sports contract.
There's no one at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conlin. Dr. Winston?
Thank you. So for the past two years, our high school has used a sports performance company to help with the training of our student athletes. And this is to supplement the training they receive from their coaches, as many of our coaches don't have an athletic conditioning background. So in addition to providing this, this service, Intents Sports Performance coaches will be used for Sparta testing at elementary and middle school students. And if you weren't aware, Sparta testing is, there's a Sparta force plate that we actually received a school power grant for a few years ago, and that helps us to track and improve the physical body function of all of our students. So the data provides the PE staff with exercises to help improve the physical well-being of all of our students. And so while we anticipate probably some likely modifications due to the current situation we're in, we would like to approve this contract nonetheless, so that we have it available when it's appropriate to use.
Any board member questions regarding this contract? Okay, I see none. May I have a motion, please?
They'll move.
Second.
Board member Bickers, board member Kelly, thank you. Any discussion on this? I see none, just double-checking your squares. Okay, student board rep vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. And roll call vote for board members, please.
Member Bickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, motion carries 5-0. We are now down on items number 18. This is adoption of resolution 20-14 in support of dyslexia awareness month. We do have live public comment opportunity. Please raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized. I'm gonna read the resolution after public comment. Any raised hands?
There are no hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. So I'm just gonna read. Whereas dyslexia is defined as an unexpected difficulty in reading for an individual who is expected to be a much better reader, whereas dyslexia is a difficulty in identifying the individual sounds of spoken language, which then affects the ability of an individual to speak, read, spell, and often learn a language. Whereas dyslexia is the most common learning disability and affects 80 to 90% of all individuals with a learning disability. Whereas an individual with dyslexia may have weakness in decoding or reading fluency and strength in higher-level cognitive functions. and strength in higher level cognitive functions, such as reasoning, critical thinking, concept formation, or problem solving. Whereas great progress has been made in understanding dyslexia on a scientific level, including the epidemiology and cognitive and neurobiological basis of dyslexia. Whereas early diagnosis of dyslexia is critical to ensure individuals with dyslexia receive focused, evidence-based intervention, allowing the promotion of self-awareness and self-empowerment, and the provision of necessary accommodations to ensure school and life success. Whereas this dyslexia has significant educational implications that need to be addressed by public schools and school districts. And the California State Senate has adopted a resolution recognizing and designating October, excuse me, as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Whereas the Board of Education of the Laguna Beach Unified School District is committed to creating the conditions and culture that supports world-class learners and is committed to improve the understanding of dyslexia and its warning signs, appropriate evidence-based structured literacy instruction, and appropriate classroom accommodations and modifications. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Laguna Beach Unified School District recognizes that dyslexia has significant educational implications that must be addressed and designates October 2020 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Dr. Valoria?
You know, I'm proud to say that we've done a lot of work in this area. I know that we will always continue to do more, but this is something that the board has been very supportive of over the last several years. And we bring this forward to you as a recognition of the importance of this work and continuing this work on behalf of our students.
Okay, any questions for board members regarding the resolution? Questions for Dr. Valoria? I see none. May I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
No question.
We didn't have any public comment in this, right?
We did. I thought we did, and there were no hands raised.
There were none. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah.
Double checking, sorry.
Okay, I double checked. I looked at my, I have a check off list now. Any questions? Carol, I think you, Board Member Normandin?
Dr. Valoria, I am sorry I didn't ask this earlier in the week, but where did the resolution come from? Like who, because I, I know it's part of it, the Yale Center of Dyslexia and Creativity website, like some of the verbiage seemed like it just came off of their website on defining dyslexia, but I was just wondering.
Where did it come from? We passed one last, last year as well. We just, was something that we found from a variety of sources and put it together because we think it, you know, recognizes the work that we're doing as well as the importance of that work.
The, the work we're doing is amazing. I'm not saying that. I just meant like the verbiage of the definition of dyslexia. Okay, I'll make, I'll wait for my other one to be discussion and for this to motion.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you very much. So Board Member Vickers, Board Member Normandin, and now discussion on the item.
The resolution seems to leave out dysgraphia. And so I don't know if we just want to add writing into it or really just change the first two where as's so that it incorporates that. So that's my only.
Okay, I'm just rereading it. So it's decoding, reading fluency. Sorry, everybody, I'm reading. Okay, so we could add, do you want to, is that okay, Dr. Valoria, or?
Can, how about, can I read the other definition, like the actual, because it says dyslexia is defined as? And so under, I couldn't actually find that definition. So, but dyslexia is defined as a learning disability that involves difficulties in acquiring and processing language. And that is typically, is typically manifested by a lack of proficiency in reading, spelling, writing, and pronouncing words. These neurobiological challenges have no connection to a dyslexic person's overall intelligence, creativity, and ingenuity, ingenuine?
Ingenuity.
Ingenuity. You got it. Yeah.
Okay, so that's the, like, the definition when you go to dictionaries, the definition of dyslexia. And I just thought that was more encompassing because it includes dysgraphia.
Read, yeah.
Right, right, it's just part of it, you know, which is part of it. I just like that. And, but then it messes up. If we adopted that, it messes up the second line, the second whereas. So we could change that whereas to dyslexic. Dyslexia affects individuals through their, throughout their lives. However impacts, however its impact can change at different stages in a person's life. It is referred to as a learning disability because dyslexia can make it very difficult for students to succeed academically in a, in a typical instructional environment. And I think that flow, that would flow better because all the work we're doing really encompasses all of that and sees it that way. And so I just thought that was a better definition and more aligned with all the amazing work that we're doing in this district.
I would make the edits that you recommended. Is that work? And you can share those with Victoria and then we can add it to it. Is that okay? Can we say we're going to approve the resolution as amended?
Yes.
I'm getting a nod. Okay.
Awesome.
Is that fine with you, Board Member Normandin?
That'd be awesome. If it's fine, if it's fine with my other members.
I think we're nodding. I see nodding. Okay.
I take it as a friendly amendment to the motion.
Okay, so the amendment to the motion is we approve with the amendments recommended by Board Member Normandin.
Correct.
You get that, Victoria? Do we need a second on the amendment?
You have, you, okay, you're good.
Okay. Okay, so we will now do our votes. So student board rep vote?
Are we having any more discussion?
Oh, more discussion, sorry, sorry.
No, I just want to acknowledge that our, both our certificated and classified staff have taken advantage of the training that we've offered and it's been extensive. They've dedicated a lot of time to that and I really am appreciative of it as this recognizes this is significant in the percentages of learning disabilities. And I've seen it over the years when it hasn't been identified early and students really, really, really struggle. So we're doing good work. Thank you.
Thanks, Board Member Vickers. Any other board member have a comment or discussion item?
I would also like to thank all of the teachers who have just taken this on and, and support staff. And I know, I know I don't, my visual is not working well tonight, but it's water. I know that all the work that you do in the area, I mean, so many, so many people in this district work in this area and it, it changes their lives. It changes students' lives. So thanks to everyone and thanks to Dr. Valoria for really, and Lisa for running with this. I know it's, it's not funded mandated, whatever that is, unfunded mandated, but with the fact that you guys are running with it no matter what, because it's the right thing to do for our students is, is so acknowledged in this community. So thank you.
You guys still hear me? I'm having, okay, working. Sorry. My computer is giving me flashing things. Okay, now we will do student board rep vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Soren. And then a roll call vote for board members, please.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. So motion carries five O. And our next item is, sorry, my computer just faded on that one, is eighteen B. This is adoption of resolution number two zero dash one five in support of bullying prevention. And now is the time for the public comment on this resolution. Please raise your hand if you would like to address this resolution.
We do have a hand raised, so I'll be putting in the last four numbers. It's a six, seven, nine, eight. You're now allowed to talk.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
I'm on one.
Yes.
Okay, I'm on my phone, so I can't see anyone. Hi, this is Yvette Lefaiyese. I'm a parent to three boys in the district. I really want to commend the board for prioritizing issues around diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have a few comments about this resolution and the next one as well. But I do want to state that I understand these are living documents, so my recommendations are simply points to consider as the resolutions continue to evolve. For this one on bullying, I would recommend highlighting LGBTQ youth. Unfortunately, we still have research that shows that LGBTQ youth are more likely to experience bullying than are heterosexual and cisgender students. There's quite a bit of evidence now that LGBTQ youth die by suicide at five times the rate as those of their straight peers if they have been bullied. There's academic implications as well. So kind of in the similar vein on how we highlighted the historical context of Black Lives in our anti-racist resolution, I would make a similar argument in regard to LGBTQ youth for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. We, we all heard you thank you, even though we can't see you. Thanks for your comments. Mr. Conlon, were there any other hands raised?
No, at this time, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. So here we go. This is a resolution two zero one five, Support of National Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas Laguna Beach Unified School District supports the right of students and staff to attend schools that are safe and free from violence, bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, and discrimination. And whereas providing a safe school environment that ensures both the physical and emotional safety of students and staff creates the conditions necessary to foster academic achievement. And whereas bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, discrimination, and violence, and even the fear of harm can create barriers to learning and contribute to low self-esteem, depression, anger, and in extreme cases, school violence or suicide. And whereas a safe school is one where teaching and learning are not distracted, disruptions are minimized, drugs, violence, bullying, cyberbullying, and fear are not present. Students are not discriminated against. Expectations for behavior are clearly communicated and consequences for infractions are consistently and fairly applied. And whereas school districts and county offices of education have a responsibility to ensure a safe school environment that is free of intimidation and harassment. And whereas the most effective approach to creating safe school environments requires a comprehensive, coordinated effort, including school-wide, district-wide, and community-wide strategies, where all institutions, organizations, and individuals must accept responsibility for their critical roles and collaborate to establish a positive environment for teaching and learning. And whereas the California School Boards Association supports local schools, districts, and communities in developing, implementing, and monitoring policies and programs to address the prevention, intervention, and elimination of bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And whereas the month of October is National Bullying Prevention Month, a campaign in response to the need to raise awareness of bullying that provides schools and communities with an opportunity to educate students, parents, and others about their role in bullying prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that Laguna Beach Unified School District supports the goals of National Bullying Prevention Month and will work with a broad spectrum of local community stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, and staff to develop, implement, and monitor policies and programs that foster and support a positive school climate free from harassment, bullying, discrimination, and violence. Be it further resolved that Laguna Beach Unified School District urges the state of California to continue to invest in, promote, and support comprehensive, coordinated, and collaborative strategies to prevent bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, discrimination, and violence in our schools so that all students have the opportunity to attend school, engage in the classroom, and achieve academic success. Okay, we did our public comments. Dr. Valoria?
Yes, again, I just appreciate the board passing a resolution around this topic. It's been a topic that we have worked on for many years. And, you know, we look at the data and disaggregate the data. That's one of the reasons we bring the Healthy Kids Survey to you and have UCSD involved in that, is they help us to disaggregate the data based off of significance on groups. And at the same time, we've also realized when we review the data that we had areas for growth and improvement. And one of those areas in particular was students' comfort in reporting bullying on campus. And that has been something that we have worked very hard to address. And, you know, for example, the Healthy Kids Survey in, in 2016, 17, we had less than fifty percent feeling safe to be able to, to do that, to report it. And, sorry, less than sixty percent. And then in, we saw significant growth, right, and close to ten to fifteen percent. We want students to understand that we take it seriously, that we have mechanisms to address that. And so we're again grateful for the work of our administrative teams on our school sites as well as our teachers who talk about this topic regularly. And I think our focus in No Place for Hate and the Anti-Defamation League work that we've done, the, the work that you see at the elementary schools. And to, a reminder that Margaret Water gave me when I first walked in the door here a long time ago was that we all need to have a common language when we talk about bullying and harassment and how we address it in this school district. And I think the results of, of our student surveys are showing that that's what we're, we have now. And we can always get better. We will. But I am proud of the work so far and I know we'll keep it moving forward. So thank you for the board consideration.
Any board member questions right now?
Can we add what Yvette was saying someplace in here about the special needs of LGBTQ students? Or is that making it too specific since we would also need to add anti-discrimination to Jewish students, et cetera?
I feel like, well, we can't do discussion yet. So do we want to have a motion on it and then we can have discussion? Okay, second. Okay, thank you. So that was Board Member Kelly and Board Member Normandin. Thank you for the second. So now we can have an open discussion on it. For me, it says all. So.
I think she was suggesting that we look at something like the other has a preamble, but she also was suggesting that it was a growing or living, whatever word she used, document. And so I think she was more interested that we have keep her comments in mind going forward. Not necessarily to try to place it in this, what's written here, but I agree with you. This all should cover it and.
I think we know, but making us aware of the number of LGBTQ students that commit suicide and, you know, have other social, emotional issues, I think that's really important to keep in mind.
I hope board members don't mind. I was just going to ask our student board reps if they had any input on this resolution or thinking on their own, since they.
They should, they should enter the discussion, certainly.
Yeah, I'd love to speak about this. You know, I think that we definitely have this kind of this positive environment that we're constantly obviously working for, working towards and for. And I think that part of this is definitely having SRO officers on campuses. I think, I know since I definitely felt like safer, whether it's physically, whether it's emotionally, having some that knows there for them specifically. I think that we, I think that we're trying to make, make it an environment of care where teachers and administration, all staff can be there in all ways for students. I think having a specific person whose job is to be there to protect students makes many students in groups that would be marginalized feel much safer. And that's amazing work that we've done as a district and as leaderships. I commend everyone for that. And I also like to comment on the, the fact that I think in a positive environment from the entire community is very important to remember in the sense that this is not something that's just teachers, it's not something that's just like lessons. It's something that comes from the community, from the parents, this is something that we need to like work for in all students at all ages, so that we can promote this environment of care and positivity throughout, throughout learning, the learning period, and not just in school, but at home. I think that's essential for a positive environment where students feel safe on and off campus and with their friends, with, with other families and, and all situations. So I think it's very, very important to add. I think that this does a good job of explaining that and and I think the actions that we've done have definitely helped to create this positive environment. And I look forward to continuing to see how that is created.
Johanna, did you want to comment at all?
I mean, Luke did a great job explaining that, but I think that's so important on their school campus because I, I know people and I think just having a supportive community and feeling and not having to have to feel like you're an outsider at all is really important. And I think our school needs to make sure that that's a priority. And I think we have done a good job in terms of trying to put that out there. So, yeah, I mean, like, extend it all. So, yeah.
Great. Any other board members with any discussion?
I have a question. I have a question for our students. Because I have a particular concern in an area that I think has been really challenging to us, which is cyberbullying. And I would just like to hear, say, any comments on that, if it's. And I would just like to hear if they have any comments on that, if it's, if they're really aware of that, and how dramatic the impact is on other students.
Um, I think that's maybe, I know that's difficult, obviously, to regulate, because it's not something that, you know, teachers see directly. But, I mean, I don't know, personally, I don't either post or care too much about what happens, but I know people do, and I know it happens. And I know it's obviously a huge issue, but I'm not totally sure in terms of what the school does. But maybe just, you know, bringing awareness and having it be known that this is not something that school will tolerate. It's a good thing to start with, I think.
In my experience, I think this is definitely something that can be improved on. I think, as Johanna mentioned, it's a difficult topic. I mean, how do you, what is the role of the school when it comes to like the cyberbullying in that cyberspace? I think the most major incentive of bullying that I can recollect of my time here in this district is cyberbullying. And I think that is very prevalent in many different ways. And it's not always as obvious as bullying that may happen in person. I think it can be much more subtle, and possibly much more detrimental. And I think the best ways we can do this is, like I was talking about earlier, I think promoting an environment of care and of community support and education. So possibly having education at younger levels on the power of social media and on creating a healthy perspective when it comes to social media is the best way to do that. As I think there will always be negative influences on students, whether that's in person, whether that's in social media, by having a positive image of the self and an image of yourself that's separated from social media, I think is very vital to have for students. And that definitely is something that could be beefed up and improved upon as we continue.
Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Any other board members' comments? Anybody just looking? Okay, we'll go ahead. I'll do the student board rep vote on the resolution.
Yeah.
Thank you, Soren. And then board roll call on the resolution, please.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. So motion carries 5-0. And thank you, student board reps. That's great to get your input. You can also probably help us on the next one as well. So now we're on 18C. This is adoption of Resolution Number 20-16 in support of anti-racist education. You now have an opportunity to do a live public comment. Please raise your hand to be recognized. And Mr. Conlan will let us know.
At this time, Margaret raised her hand as well.
Okay.
I'm gonna go with, Margaret, I'll be good next. We'll go with the 6798 would be being allowed to speak.
Okay.
Can I speak?
Right after this guest.
He's doing a phone number first, and 6798, you can go ahead.
Okay. Hi, it's Yvette again.
Hi, Yvette.
Hi. In reference, it's odd to do this on the phone. So Jan actually nailed it on the head. That's my recommendation or my point was more like kind of as the document continues to evolve, I would recommend a preamble to really call out a population that I think at this historical moment is suffering these issues more than other groups. For the anti-racist resolution, I'm beyond impressed. It's bold, unapologetic, it's decisive. I think it's one of the strongest I've seen coming out of districts. I know that this work is not for the faint of heart. It's not for a board that's looking for comfortable victories. I like the fact that, you know, white supremacy, white privilege is explicitly called out, because conversations around those issues aren't, you know, they're raw, they're messy, they're difficult, but, you know, they're also transformative. Again, my recommendations are points to consider. I know the resolution will continue to evolve. Socie-emotional learning is incorporated in the document, but I would recommend for it to be explicitly highlighted as a separate item. I think it's one of the key components in anti-racist work, the painful process for many of our students to confront our histories past and present. In the last paragraph, the accountability measures focus only on students of color. I would recommend accountability measures for white students, such as, you know, survey data on intercultural competence, anti-racist knowledge and practices. And then lastly, I would replace Hispanic with Latinx. I really look forward to the work. I look forward to how it's gonna open up even wider spaces for all of our students to embody and express multiple identities and safe and academic spaces. And on a personal note, as a mom, it really gives me great pride to be able to show a resolution like this for my kiddos. So, thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. We appreciate your comments. I think we have another one coming in. Mr. Conlan?
No one else has their hand up, but I know Margaret was wanting to.
Oh, Margaret, I'm sorry. That's right.
That's okay. I just wanted to comment on this. As all of you know, I have a pretty diverse background. I've gone to five states, in five states, I've gone to school in 14 different schools. And in my second grade, which was many, many years ago, I went to a segregated school in Miami, Florida. And it was a very interesting experience, having been on the West Coast and East Coast and in Nevada. And those things stay with you. And from second grade, I'm a little bit older now, and I still remember the things that happened in the classroom. And it was a time, if I say the year, that the Cuban refugees were coming into Miami, and we were learning Spanish in the classroom, but we still had segregation. And I had a difficult problem in my mind with it, having gone to schools in the North and in the West. And so I say, just in an attitude of inclusiveness, that we really need to have every student, not discussing their ethnicity and color as much as that every student is an important part, an integral part of our school district and our communities. So I share that with you, because what happens when you're little sometimes has ideas that you carry on in the rest of your life. And it's made me a stronger person, but for some people, it may have deterred their ability. So I just offer that out as just a comment.
Thank you, Margaret. Mike, I just wanted to double check. We had no other hands raised. I just want to make sure before I close the public comment.
That's correct. There's no other hands up.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution, just because when you read it in its entirety. So, everyone, thank you for your patience. The Board of Education of Laguna Beach Unified School District believes that the march to true equality begins when a community insists on providing its children with an honest accounting of the past and imparting to them values of kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. As such, the Board unequivocally supports efforts to enhance opportunities for all of the Laguna Beach Unified School District students to more honestly understand and learn about the past, the present, and the role they can play moving forward to eradicate hate and bias from our beloved community. The Board of Education declares that Black Lives Matter recognizes that the nation has been swept by a sea change, a sea of change confronting the trauma inflicted upon the Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities for over 240 years of American history. And Laguna Beach Unified School District Unified District Board declares that the Black students, the lives of Black students matter, as well as the lives of all of our students of color. Whereas Laguna Beach Unified School District recognizes that institutional racism within our system has created harmful environments for all of our students, and therefore prioritizes efforts, strategies, and resources to eliminate institutional racism and its negative impact. And whereas Laguna Beach Unified School District is committed to eliminating systemic disparities and ensuring systemic equity. And whereas addressing the needs of Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Asian, and other people of color requires the district to engage in continuous learning and to disrupt current policies and practices that perpetuate racism and disparities in educational opportunities. And whereas in recognizing that society has much to gain from reinforcing openness and connectivity and promotion of cultural awareness and respectful interactions in increasingly diverse societies, and much to lose from rising inequalities and radicalism, the Board of Education is committed to maintaining a safe, positive school environment, where all students, staff, parents, guardians, and community members are treated with respect and dignity. And whereas Laguna Beach Unified School District has focused on equity and access for all students by ways of implementing initiatives that promote increased access to rigorous coursework for underrepresented students, embed academic and social emotional supports, implicit bias training for all staff, and utilization of professional learning communities as vehicles to build capacity in our staff to understand and respond to marginalized learners' needs. And whereas Laguna Beach Unified School District will develop and implement anti-racist pedagogy and curriculum throughout our courses of study, and to develop a more robust and anti-racist ethnic studies curricula. And therefore be it resolved that the Laguna Beach Unified School District will engage in anti-racist and anticolonial behaviors and practices concerning systemic racism. And be it further resolved that the Laguna Beach Unified School District, through its instructional services department, will purchase, develop, and offer training resources that support critical dialogue and effective implementation of anti-racist practices across the entire Laguna Beach Unified School District systems. And be it further resolved, this Board commits itself not only to address the symbols of institutional racism and white supremacy, but also to proactively identify and disrupt biases, practices, policies, and remove institutional barriers that perpetuate injustice and inequality in our schools and our community, and to provide confidential and accessible means for reporting acts of racism and bias by students, parents and guardians, staff, and educational community members. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees commits to convening an anti-racism task force by March of 2021 to review the implementation and impact of the anti-racist policy and practices, and shall include Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Asian, and other people of color representing students, staff, and community members. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees commits to develop a specific anti-racist policy by March of 2021 to augment our current anti-discrimination policy, which will be posted at each school site in a prominent location. The Board further commits to this policy being established collaboratively with our stakeholders. And be it further resolved, the Board of Education vows to make decisions with a deliberate awareness of impediments to learning based on the student's actual or perceived race, color, ancestry, nationality, national origin, immigration status, ethnic group identification, ethnicity, age, religion, marital status, pregnancy, parental status, physical or mental disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, gender expression, or genetic information or association with a person or group with one or more of these actual or perceived characteristics. And be it further resolved, the Laguna Beach Unified School District will measure the impact of the aforementioned action items by capturing Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Asian, and other student of color attendance and achievement data, as well as survey data to include feelings of school connectedness and sense of belonging. These data will be gathered and reviewed twice a year and presented to the Board by district staff. Staff will provide an annual report on the progress of anti-racism education. That is the end of the resolution. Dr. Valoria, did you have any comments or anything to add?
No, I think we had a lot of conversation around this topic at the study session, and I appreciate the board's feedback. And I'm hopeful that what we discussed and brought back is what you were looking for.
Okay. Do board members have any questions? I see no questions, so we could do a motion and do a discussion.
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, so I have, Victoria, you've got Kelly, you've got Normandin, you've got a second by Vickers. You choose. Okay, so now we can have a discussion, and we can also engage with our student board reps, who also can be part of the discussion. Soren, do you have something to add? I saw you unmuted.
Yeah. You know, I think, I think that, I believe, I mentioned this, but I think I highly commend the work that we've done here in going for the cause. I think often in situations like these, it's much easier to point at the symptoms and target the symptoms instead of going for the root cause. And then here, we weren't going for the root cause. I think that's how you solve a situation like this. That's how you solve it in perpetuity, and not just in the moment, not just in the year. I think that's how you solve it for all time. I think that is obviously constant work that we will do here. And I think that's also important to remember that we live in a bubble. I mean, it's, we live in a bubble inside of a bubble inside of a bubble. And the work that we do, I think, is important to remember that we need to, we need to shift perspective. We need to remind students that, you know, the world isn't just Laguna Beach. And there is, there is, there's pain out there, there is suffering, there is violence, there are riots about these painful situations for many people. And that, those hurt people in our community. And I think to understand that, understand that situation, and to create compassion, to motivate students to be compassionate and have empathy for their fellow students, and for people that they don't know that suffer, I think is very important for creating well-rounded students that can behave in a healthy environment, and can go out in the world and reflect the values that we would like them, that they should reflect. And I think that it's important we do this by having healthy conversations. I think in many English classes, I've had these conversations before, as we do read Huck Finn. And in that book, there is a lot of tense moments that can be perceived as difficult to discuss. And I think having complex discussions beforehand and afterwards, to make sure that it's conveyed in the correct manner, is vital for a situation like this, where we want to remove bias that can happen when students read something like that, and they feel that that is normal behavior, which it absolutely isn't. And it's very important that we reflect our values as a school, and we motivate change, a great shift in perspective is absolutely necessary in the coming years and for all students. Thank you.
Thanks, Soren. That was excellent. Johanna, do you have any input on the anti-racist resolution?
Yeah, I think with the school, like making a statement as bold and in-depth as that, rather than, you know, you could easily just say that, you know, school doesn't stand for racism, which is, anybody could say that. But I think, like, describing the systematic racism and standing up for Black Lives Matters is really important. And I think that's really great that our school's saying that. And, because I think that's so important with students who, again, like Luke said, we live in a bubble, and it's hard a lot of times for people who live here and aren't being able to go out and see diversity, to realize that it happens. And so if you don't know that it happens, we don't want to, you know, take that risk of something happening because of that. And also just ignorance towards other people who we may not think are suffering because they're. Well, like, apply to, like, books and English classes in terms of changing that in any way, because I just have always, like, thought about that.
Yes. To answer, the short answer is yes to that. I think we're looking to engage in a kind of audit of all the things that we're doing, and look for opportunities to really enhance and make changes to our curriculum. And so I appreciate the feedback and the questions.
Thank you. My comment, I'll just make mine. I read about 15 of these resolutions from all over California school districts. And I feel like this has the most, not only passion behind it, but it has action behind it. And I think I just don't want a fluffy resolution that doesn't show action. So I'm grateful for, this is where the resolution is a higher level, and now we create actionable steps that our district can shift. We have our stakeholders engaged. It might be a town hall, it might, you know, it's a task force. So those are the pieces that will shift and create change when we start opening the dialogue to beyond our board meeting, but to our community members, our students in particular. So I really think the resolution, I want to be an ally in this. That's my role. I want to be an ally and support our education system growing and changing and adapting. And so I'm really pleased with it. Anybody else?
I just think this reflects that we were able to go through this clause by clause and incorporate different aspects that board members wanted to see, and to put that together, and to have a give and take, and to have some compromise, and end up with this as a final product. And it just became more expansive, which I think is, our student reps commented on that. And I, and I'm pleased with the product that we, that we have. And I look forward to getting started on the tasks, getting started on the, on the action that we are looking to carry forward. I listen to our student reps, and I think they've been in school, I'm assuming they've been in this district for a while. So as we have tried to incorporate kindness and caring and move it up to the grade levels with different programs, and then this recent with the, working with Anti-Defamation League and No Place for Hate, this, this now gives us an. This, this now gives us an opportunity to give more actual in-depth understanding of what it means to be kind, not just kind with the kids that are in your neighborhood or in your class or your teachers, but what it really means if you have a kindness attitude and a caring attitude about everyone. For me, the, the ultimate place we want to get to is that we just look at each other as if we can't see each other. And it's, and we're just people. And that's, that's to me is the ultimate objective for us, people worldwide. And so if we can contribute to that and our students leave here with a better ability to reach that goal, it would be beyond measure. Thank you.
Any other comments from Board members?
I'd like to go back to the parents' comments about all students. And again, if you remember the study session, I suggested that we put all students at the beginning, which we did. And I'm wondering if we could do that also at the, at the last, be it further resolved, the item by capturing all students, including Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Asians, et cetera. I don't want to take away.
Right. So you want to capture data from all students?
That's right.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. Does every, it's the final paragraph for board members who might be on their computer or have the piece of paper. And it would be, be it further resolved that the Laguna Beach Unified School District will measure the impact of the aforementioned actions by capturing all students, Black, Indigenous. That's what you've mentioned, which I think is a, does anybody have any discussion on that?
I guess that'd be how would, Dr. Valoria, how would you interpret that? Like, what would you provide to us? That would be different by adding the word all or not. I totally get racism affects all of us, right? That isms affect all of us.
Right. I mean, we, we do provide, you know, just general attendance and achievement data and survey data disaggregated. We, we need to be able to do, I think, is identify some potential questions that we would want to ask of all students around this topic in particular. And I think that's what Dr. La Payase was getting at, is that there are, there are things where you can ask all students, including white students around this topic. Obviously, we would need to work to fashion what that would be. But that, that's the way I take it, if that's the.
I'd like to amend the motion to not only approve it, but add the amendment of all students in the final paragraph. Victoria, is that suitable?
Yes, so all students, comma, Black, comma, Indigenous.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
And Peggy, the other comment I wanted to make was that we did a lot of debate on the term Hispanic and the new term.
Yeah.
We, we settled with Hispanic because more people understand what that is at this time. Whereas the, the, the new term is not that well understood or in the general public at this time.
Latinx is using, is being used in business quite a bit, in business proposals where Hispanic tends to be used in education more, I think.
Right. That's what Dr. Valoria answered for us, that education issues in the term Hispanic. So we stuck with that.
At least in the people that, you know, that we, that we reached out to, to clarify.
But I think that people need to know that we did discuss it.
Yeah. Any other board comments?
Well, BIPOC is, I mean, it is acronym and people of color has been around since, you know, 1796, so. I still feel we're taken away from by adding Hispanic and Asian. But I, I think it's a growing document and as we grow, it grows, so.
Okay. Remember Perry, we were going to talk. Sorry, Carol, I can't see you, so, but I see.
I'm so sorry.
Wanted to say something.
I'll wait.
I can wait too. And I just wanted to say that I appreciate all people being in there because we're all working on this together. And I would like to also, on the survey, know how our white kids are, if this is helping them, how it's affecting them. I think we need to look at everybody. So I'm really glad that that's there. And because it is a fluid document, like we said, if, if better terms come out, we can change those things. Right?
Yeah. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, it's evolving. Okay, anyone else?
I did want to say, what, I'm sorry about the video stuff again tonight. One of the things that makes the United States such a great nation is that we can have these public conversations. And I want to thank each member of the Board for participating in the study session and having a discussion about Black Lives Matter, having a discussion about anti-racist education. And I, and we are all aware of it. We were, there were times where I'm uncomfortable. But we all hold those values and principles that we are in continuous development. And for the audience in, in education, that means that we're going to take risks, we're trying new things. If we get it wrong, we're going to work until we get it right. And that we have the shared vision of graduating global citizens. And, you know, this, this document speaks to that. And I think it's one of the most powerful things that we've done in the global citizen category of our, of our mission, of our mission and our vision. I did want to say thank you to, also to all the parents who have reached out. I also, in the first, in the preamble, on the last paragraph, on the last sentence, Black is a proper noun there, so it should be capitalized.
Okay.
I don't think we need to make a motion for that to amend that or anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just a, that just can be changed. And then I think in the direction that we're giving ourselves, for, for, and you guys can all correct me if you don't see it that way, but for the audience in general listening, that we're declaring that we're looking, we're going to look at our policies and practices and we're going to disrupt racism. And that, and that we're going to create a task force. I would like, if the Board is agreeable, I'd like a board member or two board members, I'm not sure what the law is, but I know there can't be three, but I don't know if we can have two or not, on, on that task force. I think that'd be important. And I think from that task force, we're really going to, that's where the action's going to be created of what we do outside of us looking at our policies and practices for disruption of racism. The rest of the work will be done through the task force.
And.
Does that, do we have consensus? Is that what we're, is that what we're all?
Tonight, we're doing the resolution. We're not talking about the task force. I think that's a separate item. That's not an actionable item. We're actioning only the resolution.
No, no, I'm not saying action. I think in, when we, when we approve these things, we're also giving direction to staff. That's all I'm saying. The direction to Dr. Valoria. I was just looking to see, like, if there's, I'm also having.
Also bring that up, Carol, under the next, under the next agenda item you could bring up that you're.
Just, just a reference for people watching, there is a document where people can type in their public comment that's not read aloud. And there were comments on this item that all board members got at 12 noon today and could read them. So just so those citizens know that wrote a comment, all of those were read by all five board members. Anything else to add?
I think I'll just take this kind of second, in the sense that, you know, this is like, I think this really helps with promoting the global citizen minds that I was talking about earlier. I think that having that kind of shift in perspective where we see a larger, larger vision and a larger view of people outside, that goes beyond what we see here in our bubble. And this document does do a great job of not only outlining that and, as someone mentioned earlier, like, getting, getting to the core of it and being unapologetic about it. But I think also does a good job of creating action.
He froze.
He didn't freeze for me.
No, not for me either.
Yeah, I think he froze for you. I think you're frozen, Jan. You're fine, Soren.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The setting that creating action here, this is the thing that we're talking about, that we're doing about. And I think that's the most important thing that we can do in this time.
That's great. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else before we do a vote? So student board rep vote on the resolution for anti-racist education, Soren?
Yes.
Thank you. And Board Member roll call vote, please. Victoria?
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. We're now on to our final item, which is number 17. Wait.
Eighteen.
It's, it's 19 actually, sorry. It's 17 on one sheet, 19 on another. Apologies. It's the last one. And this is Board Member requests for information and suggestions for items for future meetings. I do want to explain to our student board reps why we do this. The Board operates as a five-person entity. And so we do this so we can see if we have consensus on bringing things forward. So we work as a, a five-member board. So in case you're wondering. We have a live public comment opportunity right now. And so if you would like to comment and you are one of our attendees, please raise your Zoom hand. And Mr. Conlon will bring you in.
Yes, we've, Sherry Morgan, you'll be being brought in now.
Thank you. You have to unmute, Sherry. You're still muted.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment the student reps and their, the voice that they brought to the table tonight. I think it's really important that we broaden that reach. And I would love to see them create larger groups of students where they can discuss and talk about different issues and then bring those results forward. I think it's a huge step in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other hands raised?
Not this time.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, for all your help tonight on this. Okay, so we're going to do Board Member requests. Board Member Vickers?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I got you first.
Just, I turned off the video because, oops, my sound was not working very well. I missed some of what Soren said. Again, I think that there's so much going on right now. I don't specifically have any items for future meetings, but I would just like to request for information, just that our, we continue to receive as much information as we have been. We've really are aware of what's going on as we, as we have students return to campus and we, as that goes forward, because we are headed in that direction for all of our students. And that, just have to add that I'm really appreciative of having so much input from our student reps tonight. As I had shared recently, this has really been something that was important to me because it's, we had had it and then it kind of went away where students didn't feel, you know, interested in coming. And so it's just, seems like it's getting, it's improving each year. And I am really appreciative that they feel comfortable enough to speak up and to give us their thoughts. It really, it's, it's something that we're not going to get unless they do that. So I appreciate all that and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Vickers. Board Member Dr. Kelly, do you have any requests?
I would like to get information on how we are going to be apportioning the time of our nurses as we go forward with opening our secondary grades. And maybe the administration could even think about maybe putting on another nurse. We have flu season coming and we have no idea how this has gone to affect the pandemic. But we do know that it's, it's there. And so I think that the second nurse has done a spectacular job. But I think with where we're going now, we should really be thinking about how we're going to deploy this wonderful person power.
Do, consensus from other board members? Would that be of interest, a report on kind of the nurse and the work? Can you give me a nod? Okay. I would agree. So that's a consensus on that.
The whole return to school plan, it should, it would be incorporated within that, I would think, that would work.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Dr. Kelly?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Perry?
Same thing. I think our new board reps are doing a fabulous job. We're so excited to have you here. I mean, looking forward to the next steps, the action part for anti-racism resolution. And then also I was asked by some parents to commend the Board, commend Dr. Valoria and Carol for bringing forward, having the testing. They really appreciated that. And they, I know we have it scheduled again, but I wondered if we could schedule it even past that or, you know, possibly before the secondary go back, if we can have some more testing, COVID testing.
So you're getting a nod.
We'll be testing before secondary come back, for sure.
Okay, so yeah, maybe if we could have a little schedule of when we could do that for parents, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Perry. Board Member Normandin?
I have a few. I, I'd like to have an LGBTQ plus resolution brought to the May agenda so that it can align with June Pride Month. And I have that on my last item. For a while, I was going to send it to Jim first and have a discussion, but if there's a consensus, I really would like to do that.
That's Pride Month is May?
Is June. And so something, something in May. We don't have our calendar yet. We won't do that till our organizational meeting. But if we have two in May, the end of May, if we have two in June and the first in June, but, you know, that we have it on our agenda and time for, to align with June Pride Month.
I would support that.
Me too.
Yes.
Okay, so there's consensus. Board Member Perry? I can't see her nodding. Yes, she's nodding in her, in her lake, her ocean.
I also, I would also like, when the Board passes a resolution, I'd like Dr. Valoria to provide an update, the actions from the resolution, the actions that, that will be taken and, you know, in executive, not in the administrative level, what kind of the executive view of that. I think that that could be.
Do you mean, I just want to clarify, this is not a discussion? Do you mean in a board meeting or in a weekly update?
In a weekly update, sorry, in an update, yes.
Thank you.
And that I think that the task force should have whatever the legal amount of board members are allowed to be on a task force because, for the anti-racist one, because I think that it is such an important matter.
Can I make a recommendation on this? Because I'm not sure if I, that however the steps progress after a resolution that has actionable items, those are reported as they come through as part of our weekly update instead of kind of one big, because that's how it's going to come through.
Yeah, but I just know, like, like, kind of like on our agendas now, we point to how that ties into LCAP. I think it'd be great in updates for the superintendent to point to how this ties into resolutions. I think that'd be really important as a board for our unity, for us to really see how that becomes interpreted and the changes that come from it.
Yeah, I'm going to need to kind of maybe sit and talk to you a little more about understanding what that would look like, because that could be very complicated. So that would be really trying to redo the weekly updates. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like. So maybe you and I can talk offline and then we can bring it back and talk a little bit more at a board meeting if necessary.
Okay.
Sure.
I just may be misunderstanding exactly what it would entail, but, you know, it could be very, a lot, or it could be small.
So let's you guys talk offline, so we don't get into any discussion, because we can't. And then Board Member Norman, do you have any other requests?
The other one was just on the task force that we consider putting board members on it, or a board member on it.
Okay. Well, that will come out.
Not who is, because that would go to our organizational meeting, right? So I'm just saying that we consider it so that we can have a discussion at the organizational meeting, probably is the right way to say it.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Board Member Norman. So my only, I don't really have a request, but I did want to note something. I was going through our policies on the new board docs, and that is amazing. So for people, citizens who want to see our bylaws, our policies, I was just kind of doing some research today, rereading the bylaws on which I function. And it was amazing. So I want to congratulate Victoria Weber for an amazing import of all our policies that are easy and accessible. And if any citizen is not sure what our job is, go to our policy page. It is clear, it is defined, they are updated, and I was impressed. So I just want to state that for the record. I have no other requests. And I do want to note that our next regular board meeting is on October 22nd. And we do have on our agenda the reopening of secondary. We'll be presented at that meeting. And we need a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Board Member Norman, or Dr. Kelly, thank you. And may I have a roll call vote to adjourn?
Dr. Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
She says yes. Did she drop off? I think she dropped off.
Clerk Normandin?
Yes.
President Wolf?
Yes, I'm going to say carries 4-0 because I don't see, I think she lost her Wi-Fi. So our board meeting is adjourned. It's. So our board meeting is adjourned. It's at 8:13. And thank you, new student board reps. Welcome to our group. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thanks.